Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting for November 19, 2024. Calling a meeting to order at 7:54. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Roth is absent.
Thank you. I just want to report that Councilmember Roth, he wasn't feeling too well and he had to leave, so he was part of our regular close session, but he wasn't feeling too well. Roy, close session announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing, no reportable action was taken at this time.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to request that item number 44 be placed after item number 41 because I have a conflict on item number 42 and 43. The discussion regarding water is close to, proximity to my house, so there's a conflict there. And the consolidation of Livingston, Floyd, and Shelby, even though I'm at the lower level, I am an MTO employee, thus for abundance of caution, I will recuse myself as well on that item.
Okay, so there's a request to move item 44 after 41. Is there any, any disagreement? I'm okay with that. Seeing none, is there anything else?
After, after 41.
After 41. All right, thank you. Next, we have citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. Is there any citizen comments for any items not on the agenda? Please come forward. You have three minutes. And if you can, please state your name for the record. Is there anyone on the phone? Hearing none, is there anyone in the chamber? Can you hold on? Can we make sure that the mic is on, please? Thank you.
My name is Angela Welch Lara, and my address is 1848 Ashby Road in Merced, California. I'm a retired educator of Merced City School District, 26 years, one school district, and 25 years, one school, Alicia Reyes. My last observation was made by Sacramento Department of Education in 317, 2017, and I was forced to fill out an accident report. By the time I got done, all my paperwork came back from workman's comp and all that, that I was never an educator, and it's all classified. And that means I don't have registered fingerprints with the state, and so I'm having trouble with my community of Merced, and I've approached them many times following protocol. I was hoping to leave a living, breathing trust for the next, the children on that part, but the next union rep doesn't have to go through the same thing. Being that I'm an educator and you go to do your work, your taxes, it's difficult to be stuck between because it's like bait and switch identity theft in a sense. And I did not do the 100%, so that means it's like I'm being stripped of my tenure credential at the same time. And then when I go to present or approach my, the California Teachers Association, those who were running the district at the time, the principal and the others, are now part of the California Retired Teachers Association. So I'm stuck in between two places, and I haven't had much success. And so I actually have posters and books and things like that. And I'm out of New Mexico, and I can prove myself from the 1500s First School Board because my cousin is an actor, and I'm not trying to brag, it's just he's the Robocop of all the Robocops of the 1500 First School Board. I'm being told I have no rights. And I have a brand from 1882, and we've all laid down our lives, our families. Why not leave a living, breathing trust? The prior grievance was taking me dragging, kicking, and screaming when I had 20 years and the other person had eight, and her husband was a lawyer and now a judge. That's difficult to go against in my community. And now they're trying to do dual language, but it's through MONG, through the county. But how are you going to do that when you're stripping the teachers that are the bilingual bee clad teacher to a classified person, never a teacher, on paperwork? So it's difficult. And where is Sacramento going to find students at an account clerk's desk? That was my last observation. And I would like representation. I haven't had any luck there. I'm told stuck between unions, and I haven't had much success in response by them. And I've actually put it into a big book, and I was trying to apply for an endowment.
Can you go ahead and finish up your comments, please?
Appreciate some assistance with my community and possibly approach others and share this story and give back to the migrant child. And I'm all the way from Roswell, New Mexico. Migrant means you're following the crop. I was EO English all the way. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments in the chamber? No, thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Chip Cheeth. Do want to start with a quick birthday shout out. It's one of my favorite uncles. Birthday today, he's not watching, but he's going to get happy when he sees this. So happy birthday to Titooma, big 50 for him. Comment related to something I brought up back in April, just haven't seen it on the agenda since then, and hoping I can get clarification, and if not, happy to follow up with anybody. Before the meeting, prior to the April 16 meeting, I can't remember the date, at the end of the meeting, Councilmember Roth and the future agenda item section had asked if we could do a water study related to Emerald textiles. The next meeting, I had asked about the update on that just because I didn't see it on the agenda, and I was told that these things take time. Obviously, you can't just have a study in two weeks. Didn't know that at the time. But I haven't seen it on the agenda since then, and it's been several months since that was brought up, so just wanted to ask if that's on the radar. Are we looking into the water usage of Emerald textiles at all as a study in progress? I've also heard rumblings about Emerald being way out of compliance in terms of how much water they're using. Obviously, you don't have any evidence for that. It's just something that's been brought up to me by folks in the community, so I'd wanted to mention that, and just wanted to ask about the progress of that whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other additional citizen comments in the chamber at this time? Thank you.
Julio Valdez. So I talked to you guys before you went to close session, and you guys had asked, well, actually, you, Mr. Mayor, you, Maria, you guys had said that you would put this in the agenda or close session to go back and look into paying the people that you did not pay after the Fourth of July festival. So I wanted to ask you guys to bring that up again. There was no reportable action. I don't know if there was action or not on that, but when you talked to the band manager, you told him that it would be on today's agenda. You also told him that you would even give your council money to him if, for whatever reason, nothing happened. So like I said earlier, Mayor Moran, Maria, you guys say that you're for the community, with the community, that you support the community. These kids that played on the Fourth of July are part of your community, and just like I said earlier, one of the kids that played in the band was one of your students at Livingston High School, so I hope that you guys really reconsider that. I understand that there was not a contract, but you used to do events. Sometimes things happen. Bands don't show up, you gotta do something and make the show go on, so that's what I did. I asked that band who played two days for free, I asked them, well, this other band didn't show up, can you play one more set, and we'll go ahead and pay you? So they agreed, and we had
Is absent.
Thank you. I just want to report that Councilmember Roth, he wasn't feeling too well and he had to leave, so he was part of our regular close session, but he wasn't feeling too well. Roy, close session announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing, no reportable action was taken at this time.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to request that item number forty-four be placed after item number forty-one, because I have a conflict on item number forty-two and forty-three. The discussion regarding water is close to, proximity to my house, so there's a conflict there. And the consolidation of Livingston, Floyd, and Shelby, even though I'm at their lower level, I am an MTO employee. That's for abundance of caution, I will recuse myself as well on that item.
Okay, so there's a request to move item forty-four after forty-one. Is there any, any disagreement? I'm okay with that. Seeing none. Is there anything else?
After, after forty-one.
After forty-one. All right, thank you. Next, we have citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the City Council this evening. Is there any citizen comments for any items not on the agenda? Please come forward. You have three minutes. And if you can, please state your name for the record. Is there anyone on the phone? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the chamber? Can you hold on? Can we make sure that the mic is on, please? Thank you.
My name is Angela Welch Lara, and my address is eighteen forty-eight Ashby Road in Merced, California. I'm a retired educator of Merced City School District, twenty-six years, one school district, and twenty-five years, one school, Alicia Reyes. My last observation was made by Sacramento Department of Education in three seventeen, twenty seventeen, and I was forced to fill out an accident report. By the time I got done, all my paperwork came back from workman's comp and all that, that I was never an educator, and it's all classified, and that means I don't have registered fingerprints with the state, and so I'm having trouble with my community of Merced, and I've approached them many times following protocol. I was hoping to leave a living, breathing trust for the next, the children on that part, but the next union rep doesn't have to go through the same thing. Being that I'm an educator and you go to do your work, your taxes, it's difficult to be stuck between, because it's like bait and switch, identity theft, in a sense. And I did not do the hundred percent, so that means it's like I'm being stripped of my tenure credential at the same time, and then when I go to present or approach my, the California Teachers Association, those who were running the district at the time, the principal and the others, are now part of the California Retired Teachers Association. So I'm stuck in between two places, and I haven't had much success. And so I actually have posters and books and things like that. And I'm out of New Mexico, and I can prove myself from the fifteen-hundreds first school board, because my cousin is an actor, and I'm not trying to brag, it's just, he's the Robocop of all the Robocops of the fifteen-hundred first school board. I'm being told I have no rights. And I have a brand from eighteen eighty-two, and we've all laid down our lives, our families. Why not leave a living, breathing trust? The prior grievance was taking me dragging, kicking, and screaming, when I had twenty years and the other person had eight, and her husband was a lawyer and now a judge. That's difficult to go against in my community. And now they're trying to do dual language, but it's through MONG, through the county. But how are you going to do that when you're stripping the teachers that are the bilingual, be clad teacher, to a classified person, never a teacher, on paperwork? So it's difficult. And where is Sacramento going to find students at an account clerk's desk? That was my last observation. And I would like representation. I haven't had any luck there, and I'm told stuck between unions, and I haven't had much success in response by them, and I've actually put it into a big book, and I was trying to apply for an endowment.
Can you go ahead and finish up your comments, please?
All right. Appreciate some assistance with my community, and possibly approach others and share this story and give back to the migrant child. I'm all the way from Roswell, New Mexico. Migrant means you're following the crop. I was EO English all the way. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any other citizen comments in the chamber? No. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Jepjeet. Do want to start with a quick birthday shout-out. It's one of my favorite uncles. Birthday today. He's not watching, but he's going to get happy when he sees this. So happy birthday to Titooma. Big fifty for him. Comment related to something I brought up back in April, just haven't seen it on the agenda since then, and hoping I can get clarification, and if not, happy to follow up with anybody. Before the, the meeting, prior to the April sixteenth meeting, I can't remember the date, at the end of the meeting, Councilmember Roth and the future agenda item section had asked if we could do a water study related to Emerald textiles. The next meeting, I had asked about the update on that, just because I didn't see it on the agenda, and I was told that these things take time. Obviously, you can't just have a study in two weeks. Didn't know that at the time. But I haven't seen it on the agenda since then, and it's been several months since that was brought up, so just wanted to ask if that's on the radar. Are we looking into the water usage of Emerald textiles at all as a study in progress? Have also heard rumblings about Emerald being way out of compliance in terms of how much water they're using. Obviously, you don't have any evidence for that. It's just something that's been brought up to me by folks in the community, so I wanted to mention that, and just wanted to ask about the progress of that whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other additional citizen comments in the chamber at this time? Thank you. Go ahead.
Julio Valdez. So I talked to you guys before you went to close session, and you guys had asked, well, actually, you, Mr. Mayor, you, Maria, you guys had said that you would put this in the agenda or close session to go back and, and look into paying the people that you did not pay after the Fourth of July Festival. So I wanted to ask you guys to bring that up again. There was no reportable action. I don't know if there was action or not on that, but when you talked to the band manager, you told him that it would be on today's agenda. You also told him that you would even give your, your council money to him if, for whatever reason, nothing happened. So, like I said earlier, Mayor Moran, Maria, you guys say that you're for the community, with the community, that you support the community. These kids that played on the Fourth of July are part of your community, and just like I said earlier, one of the kids that played in the band, it was one of your students at Livingston High School, so I hope that you guys really reconsider that. I, I understand that there was not a contract, but you used to do events. Sometimes things happen. Bands don't show up. You gotta do something and, and make the show go on, so that's what I did. I asked that band who played two days for free. I asked them, well, this other band didn't show up, can you play one more set, and we'll go ahead and pay you? So they agreed, and we had several meetings with you guys, and you guys asked for paperwork. They turned in W nine, they turned in their invoice, nothing happened. Same thing with the nonprofit. I gotta go faster because I'm running out of time, but same thing with the nonprofit. Nobody wanted to do the beer garden here in Livingston, so we had to get someone else. You guys said that you didn't authorize it, authorize them or whatever. There was no contract, but you signed, I'm pointing at the city manager, you signed their beer permit to go to the state, to ABC. At that time, you should have said, hey, we don't have a contract, let's get a contract, but you never said nothing neither. The police chief, the previous police chief also signed that, so the city was aware and knew that they were going to do the, the beer booth. They turned in over eight thousand dollars to the city. We turned it in. You guys have the receipt and everything. They need to get their part as well. So the band needs to be paid a thousand dollars. I know that Gropal talked to him. You guys responded to him. The lawyer called me, because he put it on social media that you guys didn't want to pay, and that's the only time that you guys responded to him or me. The lawyer called me right away that day, when, when it was put on social media. But I'm here not to argue, not to bring that up, but the other thing I want to do, ask is that you guys go ahead and pay them their dues. They, they're a nonprofit. Who put their time? They brought people to, to, to work. They, they, they paid for stuff. They still got to pay the state taxes for the sales of that as well, and so they're, they're still, they're still there. They also paid the, the permit, again, that you signed, Mr. City Manager, and, and so on. So I'm asking that you guys reconsider and pay the band, Estilo Payame, their one thousand dollars.
Then you go ahead.
And the nonprofit, the other amount.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments in the chamber? Roy? So just, just so, and I appreciate the comments, and I just want to be able to respond. Obviously, I'm not able to share, share close session information, but the only thing I can say is that, that direction was given, and city staff will be contacting those people for more information. And then later, I can provide more information if anybody needs it, and I, and I do want to say that, that I did, I did always respond to people, not because it was on social media, but you and I had plenty, more than a couple of conversations prior to that, and so, so it's not that I never answer calls. I, I'm, I'm always answering, responding to calls. The most I take normally is not even twenty-four hours. Sometimes when people call me or reach out to me, sometimes even within the hour. So, you know, I'm not sure if you were referring to me or just in general, but, you know, when there, there are things in place, I'm not going to be micromanaging city staff when there, you know, it is not my duty to, to micromanage city staff, but just, but I understand your frustration, and, but I also understand that I have to follow what, what the majority of the council makes a decision on. So just, but if anybody has any other questions, feel free to reach out. Everybody has my number. Most people know where I live. See me around town, social media, anywhere. I'm always, I'm always very reachable. All right, thank you. Okay. Any other citizen comments? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at eight oh nine. Next, we have announcements or reports. So we have city staff announcements or reports. Jackie Benoit, Recreation Superintendent, Christmas Parade update.
Good evening, everyone. I thought that it would be, well, actually, my boss thought it would be a good idea that I gave an update for the Christmas Parade, and the chief is going to open my presentation with the Twelve Days of Christmas. Okay, December first. So I thought that it would be kind of fun to give you guys, wait, a little history lesson on the Christmas Parade. So the annual Livingston Lighted Christmas Parade started in two thousand and two at the recommendation of Councilmember Roy Soria, and has been a well-received event ever since. So the very first theme was an International Christmas, for those of you that may remember or may not, and our first grand marshal was Ramon Martinez, and he was the leader of, or the president of the Livingston Youth Football. So two thousand and twenty-four marks our twenty-second annual event, and it will be a superhero Christmas. So I thought I would throw in a few pictures of Christmas in the past. The picture of the little ballerinas over here on the bottom, let's see if I can, no, page is dead, was from fifteen, oh, now it's moving. It was from fifteen years ago. So the traditional route was Park and Main Street. It was from Main to D until COVID started. And then the COVID route went through the neighborhoods shown to cut down on the congestion of the crowds down on Main Street. Next. So two thousand and twenty-four, the Lighted Christmas Parade route, we are going to return down Main Street from Peach to D, and then, so we'll be staging down Peach, down Seventh, and then back up Park if we need that, because our parade is quite large, and then, of course, we'll have the gift fair downtown. So we'd like the community to join us for lots of holiday spirit and memories. It will be the, it's always the second Friday of December at six thirty. The gifts bear starts at five. We'll have entertainment. We're going to have Christmas carolers at the intersection of D and Main Street, so if you like to sing, come on down, chief, the, and we'll have lots of fun singing Christmas carols, and then our, of course, our Court of Trees will be on display. And with that, if you have any questions, I did bring you all candy canes, so you would be part of the Christmas spirit early, and it's going to be, you've probably seen this, you guys can put on your Superman capes, Superwoman capes, and be a part of this neat event. Questions?
So just for, well, thank you for that. I mean, it's always great to have all those activities in the winter, Christmas, the Court of Trees and all of that. For residents that, that are, might be new to, to our city, for residents that might never have had or participated in, in the parade.
How would you sign up?
Yeah, how do they sign up, and who can sign up? Any family can sign up. They don't need to be part of any, or represent any organization, school, it can just be.
We invite all the organizations and schools, et cetera, but if your family wants to get together to start a tradition of making a float, or even having a truck and being in the back of it, or you have an old car, we welcome everyone. You can sign up. The easiest way is online. There is a link on the city website under Recreation, and you just fill it in and say what you're doing, and then we'll get back with you and tell you what place you are in the parade or when to sign up.
There's no cost for this.
It is free. Now, we don't have great big prizes that we give away. You'll just get a certificate or a ribbon, but you get lots of bragging rights.
And then, since this is just going to be down Main Street, can, can participants participate as just a walking group?
Dance, walk, yeah. As a matter of fact, when we had the, it threw more of, you know, back in the neighborhoods, people would wait till they got to the pink store to walk, because it was too far to come all the way through the whole route. So, yeah. But did you all know what I meant when I said the pink store, Julio?
It's still a pink store to me.
Yes, it will always be the pink store to me, too.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
Who's going to be Santa?
Santa will be Santa.
Who's going to be Santa?
The same Santa that comes every year at the end of the parade.
Okay. We're on his calendar, right? I mean.
He is on the calendar.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Jackie. And to all of your entire Recreation Office Department and team, yeah, many employees. Thank you. City Manager announcements?
Just one, Mayor. Looks like the preliminary results related to Measure L are continuing to trend right around seventy-one or seventy-two percent. I think right around seventy-one. I really want to thank the council for all the work that they did in advocating, providing education materials to the community, and really thank the residents for their efforts in making sure that that item got passed. We'll be putting some communication in the near term about that, so just be on the lookout for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmembers, announcements or reports? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Salto?
Yes, thank you. To your question, the meeting, Jepjeet, was April second. However, that item has been brought up at several occasions involving investigations in our water and just follow-up on many items. Tonight, there's a slew of minutes, and purposely, I believe that this happens so that people might forget that things are said during meetings if they're not following up, but thank you for your diligence and coming before the council and, and requesting that certain items continue to move forward or keep bringing items up so that it doesn't fall off the radar. Also, Julio, thank you so much for tonight's comments. I am an advocate for the city of Livingston, and I do, I am pro-youth, pro-elders, pro-Livingston. So what we can do to provide events for the city of Livingston, of course, I've been on that committee since two thousand and fourteen. We've been, you've been very successful in coordinating a lot of events for the city of Livingston, so thank you so much for your service to the city of Livingston and providing the environments and the entertainments and the events. However, we don't want to throw anybody on the bus. We want people to still continue to work on behalf of city events so that they can continue to happen, and we've always reached out to other groups when they've requested certain things. We can't, we, at least I don't make promises that they can happen, but we do our best to make sure that we work with our youth, especially the group that you discussed tonight, so that we can keep our local talents coming out and performing at our events. So thank you. I do have something for Mr. Brzezinski tonight. As you know, I'm part of the VFW, our post seven-seven-nine-two auxiliary. We do have a program through our VFW, and it hasn't been, it's been promoted, and it's been, many of them have been displayed. To date, I can recall thirteen banners that should be in the courtyard plaza across the street and along Main Street. However, there are about eight that have gone missing, and I know that I've had this conversation with Public Works and with our city, city manager and our previous city manager of how we can work better with our veterans with this program so that we at least can find funding and a procedure of how to display the banners so that we can honor our currently serving members in the military. So tonight, I do, so for those of you that haven't seen these before, I do also have tonight's presentation with Senior Master Sergeant Ramon Lopez. He was tragically killed last year, but this is an honor for his son to have a banner. I do have another military banner that I'd like to present to Dennis Brzezinski, senior, to his son, who's currently serving in the Marine Corps. These banners represent students that are from Livingston, that go into the military, and they are currently serving. The purpose of this is so that our community knows that we do have service members that we, as a council, pray for. At least, we take a moment of silence for their protection, also our POW and MIA, and we just celebrated our veterans. So these are for our currently serving. Mr. Brzezinski has a son in, in the Marine Corps, and this banner, I'm going to go ahead and present it to him so that at some point, if he would like to hand it over to the city, because I know that during this time, we're going to be taking down the decorations that are up and putting up Christmas, so this is going to be taken down, so whatever conversations you'd like to have with our Public Works or with our city admin team to see how we can better coordinate a program that I've been asking for, for, I don't know, many, many years, to see how we can work better with our, our military post. So, Mr. Brzezinski, thank you so much for your son's service.
He's on his third year. I served.
If there are members in the community that have somebody serving, and you'd like to have a banner displayed, your best bet is to either contact Dennis Wells, have his number memorized, but he does have his contact information over there on Seventh Street at the new and improved VFW Hall. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Somra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add to what Mr. Lopez said regarding Measure L. You know, election season, everybody has their own things, agendas, when they're talking in public. One thing I can probably say, that every candidate out there, everyone was united in supporting our public safety, our services. Now, I know that we will, I just, we need to make sure that we keep our word to the public in, and using Measure L for public safety, A, for our services, then the, whatever's left over for other part of public safety. Just want to make sure, I want to assure the people that I still have full attention, holding what I said to them we would do, to make sure that Measure L gets used properly. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will hold my reports until next time, to save some time, because we have a lot of items on the agenda. Next, we have the consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial, and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by a member of the public, the city manager, or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public, city council, or city manager request that, that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items shall be limited to three minutes per person, regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. So, we have items one, two, three, four, five, six, all the way up to thirty-eight in the consent agenda items. Is there, are there any questions on any of the items, whether it's just a question or that needs to be removed from the consent and discussed separately? Counsel? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Soto?
I have a question on item number thirty-two.
Question, you wanna take it out or just, just a question and keep it, keep it on consent?
I just wanna know, I'd be, because it does say that there's gonna be a pricing option, and since there's no discussion, how are we going to direct the city manager to choose which way to have this agreement?
I do, well, well, I do believe the recommendation was to do the three years from, from the office, but, from the city manager's office, but, go ahead.
The resolution does include the retainer option for the city of Livingston instead of the per-grant basis, council member.
The retainer fee will be covered through the general fund, unencumbered funds for fifty-seven thousand annually?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel? Mayor Potem?
If there are no questions or any comments, I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, so before we move forward, I do wanna just go out for public comment. Is there any questions? Is there any citizen comment on any of the items on the agenda, on, I'm sorry, on the consent agenda? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, anyone in the chamber? Seeing none, bringing it back at eight twenty-eight, so we do have a motion on the floor, a motion by, by Mayor Potem Samra, and a second by Councilmember Soto. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Wallace? Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four, zero.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing, item number thirty-nine. Resolution to confirm the closeout of the city's Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, twenty CDBG dash CV two dash three dash zero 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 six, and twenty dash CDBG dash CV two dash three dash zero 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 three four. Staff recommendation, approved resolution.
I believe we have someone on the line or happy to present this item?
Do we have a self-help representative, representative online?
So, Happy, if you could just present the staff report, that'd be great.
Good evening, mayor, staff, members of the audience. So, this item is a resolution allowing, allowing the closeout to process of the city's CDBG CV twenty and CDBG CV two dash three zero 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 six, and twenty CDBG CV two dash three zero zero thirty-four. So, these are two separate grants that the city had got when COVID was around, and this was to allow the citizens that were behind on their utility bills, mortgages, any kind of bill that they were behind on to get assistance from the city. So, now, we're closing these out. The first one, which is the twenty CDBG CV two dash three zero zero three four, as you guys read through the application, I mean, as the staff report, we had around eighty-one applicants received, sixty-four households assisted, and then seventeen were denied. Rental assistance provided for one, mortgage assistance for nine, and utility assistance for ninety-one. So, majority of the people that applied for this were for the utility bills. Applicants were denied typically due to the applicant not providing necessary documentation. Rental, mortgage, utilities were not add up to the application complete due to some households receiving more than one form of assistance. So, if you received one form of assistance, then you can't apply for it again. So, that's what a lot of these were for. As we kind of went through the whole process, we are disencumbering around ninety-nine dollars of this grant, so we used basically the total hundred and fourteen thousand that we received. On the second grant, which is the twenty CDBG CV two dash three zero 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 six, this one was specifically for the business assistance, which was converted to the substance program. So, we weren't getting enough of the business assistance for the businesses to come and kind of get the system they needed. So, what self-help did, what the city's, what the city's help, is we went back to CDBG and tried to reallocate these funds for substance payments program. A lot of the people that applied for the second phase of this, when we had this money, already got the assistance for the first one, so that's why we got a lot of denials on the second side. Applications received, thirty-four, assisted eighteen, and sixteen were denied. So, on this grant, since we did get over two hundred thousand, we are estimating around hundred and eight being disencumbered and given back to the state. And, and a lot of that was just because a lot of people already got the assistance they needed, and they couldn't basically apply again to get the, to get the assistance. So, right now, there's no fiscal impact to the city since it is a grant, so there's nothing that we gotta give back to the state. So, right now, we're, we're recommending an approval for this, closeout of these grants.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also add one thing, as part of the closeout requirements, the council is required to have a public hearing, that's why it's listed under the public hearing item. So, as part of the process, we would ask that the mayor open the public hearing, ask for public comment, close the public hearing before adopting the resolution as requested by staff.
All right, so at this time, at eight thirty-three, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone in, on the phone that has any questions in regards to this item? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber at eight thirty-three. Anyone in the chamber with questions in regards to this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais at eight thirty-four, closing the public hearing, eight thirty-four. Counsel? Any questions? Motion?
A motion to approve the resolution, closeout to the process by CDBG CV twenty, CDBG CV, and the rest of it, the grants.
Okay, so we.
I just got a little cough.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Potem Samra, second by Councilmember Wallace. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Wallace? Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four, zero.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and potential action items. Item number forty, consideration of a resolution to appoint Jasneel Singh to the Planning Commission as a regular member of the Planning Commission, and resolution to appoint Diego Castillo to the Planning Commission as an alternate member. Staff recommendation, approved resolutions. Miguel?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. Miguel Galvez, contract city planner. Just to be a little quick history, on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city council appointed Planning Commissioner Robert Wallace to the Livingston City Council. Congratulations, Mr. Wallace. On the same day, Mr. Wallace verbally resigned from the Planning Commission, creating a vacancy on the Livingston Planning Commission. Mr. Wallace subsequently submitted a letter of resignation on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Wallace was serving a term of a regular Planning Commission member with his term set to expire at the end of this year, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-fourth. With a vacancy on the roster of the Planning Commission, staff recommends that an alternate Planning Commissioner be appointed to the Planning Commission as a regular member. The appointment to fill this vacancy will have a new four-year term starting on January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Chronologically, based on when the applications were submitted, Planning Commission alternate Jasneel Singh is next in line to serve as a regular member of the Planning Commission. If appointed, a vacancy for an alternate member of the Planning Commission will also be created and should be filled. On May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Diego Castillo applied to serve on the Livingston Planning Commission. No other applications to serve on the Planning Commission have been received to date. Staff recommends that the council also adopt the resolution to approve Diego Castillo to the Planning Commission as an alternate member with a term expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seventh. In summary, staff recommends that the council consider two resolutions. The first, to appoint Jasneel Singh to the Planning Commission as a regular member with his term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And secondly, to appoint Mr. Diego Castillo to the Planning Commission as an alternate member with a term expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seventh. That concludes my report, and staff's available for questions.
Counsel, are there any questions?
When did, do you recall when the council approved the, allowing outside of the city boundaries to be part of the planning?
I, I don't recall the date. I know it's in our ordinance, on our municipal code, that allows, Mr. Diego Castillo lives outside of the city limits, but he is within the Livingston School District boundary, and there's provisions in the city ordinance that allows a member to be appointed that, if they're not in the city, as long as they're inside the school attendance boundary. Do I know the date? I, I don't know it offhand, I'm sorry. I, I wanna say it's recent, maybe like about two or three years ago, but I'd have to confirm, no? Is it more than that? I'm sorry, I don't know.
At this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any citizen comments on the phone in regards to this item? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, bringing it back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais at eight thirty-eight.
I will second that.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Wallace and Mayor Potem Samra. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
At this moment, no.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of three, one.
Next, we have item forty-one. Consideration of a resolution authorizing repayment of the State of California Senate Bill SB two Planning Grants Program Contract Number one nine dash PGP one three five nine one, grant back to the State of California. Department of Housing and Community Development. Staff recommendation, approved resolution.
Miguel Galvez, once again, here to present this item. A little background, on March twenty, two thousand nineteen, State of California Department of Housing and Community Development, otherwise known as HCD, issued a notice of funding availability for Senate Bill SB two Planning Grants Program. It was a non-competitive planning grant program. The program provides a one-time funding for technical assistance to local governments to help streamline housing approvals and to accelerate housing production. On November fifth, two thousand nineteen, the city council authorized application to this program in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. On March eleventh, twenty twenty, the grant contract was executed, a total of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars was awarded per HCD Contract Number nineteen dash PGP thirteen five nine, with a contract expiration date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. On March twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, the city executed a MOU with JEG Livingston Ranches Limited Liability Corporation to develop a residential mixed-use community on approximately thirty-five acre infill site through the processing of a specific plan, a general plan amendment, and associated environmental assessment. However, it was discovered that the MOU did not meet the state procurement requirements. Moreover, the grant award only funded a portion of the overall project. The overall entitlement process would require additional funding. In November twenty twenty-two, excuse me, November twenty twenty-one, the initial draft Livingston Common Specific Plan was submitted to the city to commence the entitlement process. March of the following year, the city provided comments to the applicant, and those were relayed both to the applicant and the applicant's agent. During this time, the applicant requested reimbursement for the applicant's costs that have been incurred to prepare the plan. Subsequently, the city received two reimbursements from HCD totaling one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, with sixty-seven cents, which were relayed to the applicant for their cost. Unfortunately, with the retirement of the applicant's project manager, no further progress has been made on the specific plan to date. At this point, the city is out of compliance with both the timing and procurement requirements of HCD's planning grant program. The state is now requesting that the grant disbursements totaling one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, plus accrued interest, be repaid to the state by the end of this month. In conclusion, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution ordering two actions. Number one, ordering the city manager, who is authorized and directed to reimburse the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development, the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and nine, sixty-seven cents, plus cost reimbursements for any interest that's applicable for the preparation of the draft specific plan. And two, approve a supplemental appropriation from the General Fund Reserve to cover this cost. That concludes my presentation. Staff's available for comments or questions.
Counsel, are there any comments, questions at this time? Before I go out for public comment? So, I, I do have a couple of questions. Miguel? So, well, first of all, and I think you already explained it, but just for clarification, in the report says that this whole work was, there was a number used, three hundred, like around three hundred and sixty thousand or so, I, I, I mean, without, three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and sixty thousand. But, three hundred and sixty-five, somewhere around there. But, only a hundred and sixty was requested, even though we knew that we were, we were about two hundred and thousand and a few thousand, other thousand dollars short. But, that, it was also said that we would figure it out, and in the future, we'll look for additional grants, right? And then, also, part of the requirements for this grant was that any third-party contracts would be, or subcontract, subcontracts would be through the process or, or of an RFP process, which was not done, correct?
Yes, well, that's correct.
And so, this subcontract- And so, this subcontractor that did all this work, for which the $160,000 was used, was not a subcontract through the city, but rather through...
The applicant, yes.
The applicant, which is, yeah, but the actual name is...
The city Gallo.
Gallo, right? Gallo Ranch, the owner of that property. And so, what we did, or what the city did at that time, was the city applied for a grant to give it to a private developer for those costs. And then, instead of having the city go through an RFP process to subcontract the service provider, that was a service provider contracted by Gallo Ranch, not the city, which already that broke the agreement with the state in the first place.
That's correct. The contract was not properly set up to meet the state requirements, so yes, you're correct.
And then, the initial agreement was that all of that work was going to be completed by 2020?
Initially, it would be completed by December 31st, 2022. There was a one-year extension, but nothing has been completed to date.
Because, also in the report, it's included that some, some questions were still asked back to Gallo, but Gallo never responded to the city, so automatically that word, that's the last, that's where it stands right now, right?
Yes, correct. Staff provided comments on the specific plan, and those comments have not been addressed by the applicant to date.
And so now, because the grant was applied by the city, so now the city is responsible for those 160,000, or almost $160,000, even though that money was already refunded to Gallo for the work that they paid to their subcontractor, correct?
Correct.
Is there any documentation that says where the other extra $200,000 were hoping to come from, to cover the whole cost that was figured out at that time? And then my other question is going to be, based on your professional experience, would that amount of $360,000, would that have been enough to cover all of the work that needed to be done, that was said it was going to be done?
Respond to your first question. In the MOU between the city and Joseph E. Gallo, the MOU commented that the city would pursue additional funding to bring to bear to develop the specific plan. So there was an understanding the city would pursue funding. There's no guarantee that it would be successful. Respond to your second question. Yes, there was a budget of, I think, $365,000 to do the whole work. In my professional opinion, in today's market, that is woefully under. And this is just to do the entitlement work. You know, beyond that, you actually have to do engineering work to prepare improvement plans and to do actual construction, and I suspect the applicant would be looking for the city to pursue additional funding sources for that. So yes, at this point, the specific plan remains incomplete. Funds have been spent, and the state is now requesting their funding back because we were not able to meet the terms of our contract agreement.
And then, since engineering, and you're here, and then I don't know, because, you know, I don't know how much of that information you're going to have for this next question. Do we have a figure, more or less, probably it's not specific, but more or less, how much was that spent on our, on our end as a city, planning and engineering on this project, if any?
I don't have an exact figure, a ballpark figure. You know, one is the cost that the applicant incurred for hiring their consultant, and we reimburse $150,000. I don't know those additional costs, sir. And there was costs associated with city staff review, that's the engineering review, planning review. And I would say maybe between $40,000 and $50,000 for the city's cost to review that, the document.
So, once, depending on what this council decides to do, so it'll be roughly, if we end up paying it back and we decide to pay it back to the state, it would be roughly about 160 plus $40,000, $50,000, roughly about $200,000, $210,000 cost that the city would have incurred for this project.
Yeah, the city would only be responsible for reimbursing the state for the costs that the state just reimbursed the applicant. The costs incurred by city staff or city contractor staff, that would not be reimbursed by the state. That's something that would, would be, I should say, by the city, if you will.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just wanted it to kind of have like a real, you know, ballpark idea what the whole item was going to cost the city. I do have another question, but I have to look for the information, and because in that MOU, it also includes language that says that the city would be covering all the costs for anything being done on our end. And I understand that, that was already included, but I'm not sure if that was a good thing to have in there, because we're saying we're just giving away money to a private developer for, from the residents to somebody else that they're going to, you know, but anyways. Counsel, any questions? So at this time, I'm going to go out for public comment. Is there any citizen comments on the phone in regards to this item? 8:51. Here and now, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? If you can, please state your name for the record.
Just based on conversation that was had right now, and reading of the staff report, seems very, trying to think of a nice way to say it, illogical to have requested $200,000 less, and obviously now we have to pay out of fund. Is there, it seems like we kind of just threw money away here, and I don't know if any of you were on council. When this was voted through, obviously, Mr. Lopez, I know you weren't the city manager at the time either, but is there no, maybe Mr. White's the question, is there no legal safeguard for that? Like, in the sense of going through with the project, approving it, but not actually identifying any funding sources for it?
What I'll say is I haven't gone through the MOU, so as of right now, I don't know if there could potentially be a claim asserted by the city against the applicant related to the loss incurred. But I have reviewed the grant portion and the request from HCD, and unfortunately, based on the grant terms, there's really not much the city can do with regard to repayment of that, of those funds.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any additional comments in the chamber in regards to this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais at 8:53. Counsel, any questions?
I just think it's really unfortunate that this item was brought to council, and I was on this council at the time that this was approved. When you paint a pretty picture for some projects that come into the city and how it would benefit the city as a whole, and not truly getting all the information upfront on how that, how the funds would be generated, it's quite deceiving. So again, we've heard many stories, and I think Mayor Moran has, without saying it, this was quite deceiving on how the funds were supposed to be. So again, the language that's put into some of these MOUs, shoulda, coulda, woulda, goes in there, unless you really nail it down to will happen, it may not. So seeing that some of the funds were, for lack of a better term, just given away, it's a shame that a city manager would have put some things forward this way, and it has continued in some other aspects through the grant process, where funds may look like they're available and that we would try our hardest, but again, City of Livingston didn't have the expertise of a grant writer, but for someone to make promises that they could find sources where this money would come from, we're at a loss. And it's unfortunate for the City of Livingston. And I did vote yes on this project because it was, at the time, the information that we were provided with, not knowing that it would come to this in the end. And so if you look at the whole picture and put things together, you may realize some things are not what they're meant to be, and we're paying for it.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? Motions?
At this time, I don't think we have a whole lot of choices, so omit the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing repayment to the State of California Senate Bill SB2 Planning Grant Program Contract Number 19-PGP13591, Grant Back to State of California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Is there a second? Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it. We really don't have a choice.
So we have a motion on the floor, but Mayor Potem, second by Councilmember Soto. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Actually, just one last question. I mean, I know it's in the report, but probably for people that didn't read the 550 pages in this report, where is this money coming from?
Be General Fund Reserves, Mayor.
Like I said, I know that, but you know, just, all right, thank you. So next, we have item 44. Discussion and direction regarding recognition of Lupe and Aurora Garcia. I know that this, this item was requested by Councilmember Jason Roth, and I did ask him if, he had to leave right after our close session because he wasn't feeling too well. I hope he's feeling better. But I don't know if anybody has any information in regards to the discussion and direction moving forward. I know that the majority of the council was in favor of something, but what that something is, as far as, I don't know. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This was something that Councilmember Roth had asked for. I went through my text messages. I know that Councilmember Roth has met with the family, and he has provided a narrative that talks about the family, the husband and the wife, and then he requested, the family requested that a picture be included on the plaque. That's all the information that I know. I don't know the location, I don't know any of those other details, but that is what I have in a text message from September from Councilmember Roth, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I know this is Mr. Roth's project along with you. Have we decided where to put the plaque, if we're going to do the plaque? I mean, I wish Mr. Roth was here. Unfortunately, I think Mr. Chavaria is coming. He must know something. Anthony?
Yeah, good evening, Counsel. Anthony Chavaria, Public Works. There was a location identified at Memorial Park next to the, between the stage at Memorial Park and the Main Street sidewalk. A plaque was identified with a picture and, as well as a tree to memorialize the area. A tree would be planted. The next step would be to, one, purchase a tree and set a planting. I don't know if Mr. Roth wants to have a presentation for the timing of this, might want to discuss that as well. You know, I would recommend a spring type of presentation. Weather's a little bit better, trees are blooming.
Okay, I think it is a good idea, Mr. Garcia. We all know Lupe and, everybody knows them, and I think it is a fitting tribute to our former mayor and his family, of course.
Counsel, any other questions? So, the direction, what I'm hearing is that would be to, yes, go ahead and move forward with that, but do we know, like, so you mentioned that he kind of looked at a plaque, he...
Yeah, Tony was working on it, and I know that they have identified a plaque with a picture that could be encased in concrete and formed on the ground in front of the tree. Would have planted a tree in that area as well. There's not a tree existing in that area, so it's a good location. Identified pretty much the plaque and the area where it would be planted, but the next step would be timing when we want to move forward with this.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Mayor and counsel, if the council's okay with the preliminary concept, what we can do is get a mock-up of what the plaque would look like, get an example of the tree, the location, and mock it up, and then bring it forward to council to get the final approval from the council, if the council directs that, Mayor.
That's, that's what I was thinking, and then, you know, mentioning that something like this would probably be whether, when, weather would be best or better, you know, around April or so, and then that gives us a little time, so I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Okay, there you go. All right, so for the next two items, we're going to, Mr. Samra, have requested to...
Yes, I, just, once again, I want to state that a conflict, one is a distance to my house, and the other is, I do work for MCOE, just want to make sure everything's up and up. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have item number 42. Discussion and direction regarding the DWSRF 27 million funding agreement for emerging contaminants. Mr. Chavaria?
Good evening, Counsel. Me again. This is a discussion and direction item you have before you. Staff is requesting that the mayor and council provide direction to staff regarding the DWSRF funding opportunity. I just summarized this in a PowerPoint, so it's a little easier to follow. A little background of the project. In 2018, the city applied for state SRF funding for implementing TCP projects and wells 18 and 19 in an amount of 42 million. The state's recent decision was to reduce the funding amount from 42 million to 27 million by removing the funding for new wells 18 and 19, which was shared at the September 3rd council meeting. On September 3rd, 2024, the council approved water enterprise funds, state funds, and ARPER funds to be used for installing an RC treatment facility at well 8A and constructing the new well 18 improvements to augment the city's water supply. Better?
Better? On October 30th, 2024, the state water board communicated the following. Available funds, both amount, funding and sources have changed. Funding for construction of the Arkalian Park centralized treatment facility and well number eight centralized treatment facility can be funded right now through DWSRF emerging contaminant funding. They also shared any potential funding for the construction of wells number 18 and 19 would need to be provided through general drinking water funding, which is overcommitted for this fiscal year. There is currently 208 million of EC emergent contaminant funding available and there's over 100, 725 million requested in current funding applications. Some of these applications are still incomplete and are processing applications on a readiness-to-proceed basis. Just to re-formularize, counsel and the public again, the centralized treatment facility at Arkalian will consist of new GAC vessels to remove the TCP, a booster pump station, and a 1.5 million gallon partially buried storage tank. As well at well number eight, that current site would be expanded, adding more trains, more GAC vessels there, as well as building a booster pump station as well and a 1 million gallon storage tank would be built there. Possible actions that the council may take. Number one, accept the state's reduced emergent contaminant funding agreement of 27 million to complete the two centralized TCP treatment facilities and direct staff to submit the DWSRF funding applications for well 19. Two, direct staff to pause acceptance of the 27 million funding agreement until lobbying efforts have been completed. There's currently 208 million of EC funding available and over 725 million requested in current funding applications. The laying acceptance poses the risk of missing out on the current funding opportunity, which could lead to delays in project timelines and potential cost increases. Number three, other council direction. That concludes this PowerPoint.
Thank you, Anthony, great presentation. I wanted to provide a little bit more information on this as well. Knowing that this was coming, there was an attachment in the staff report that included the update, I believe it was from September. We had a feeling that the state was going in this direction. Luckily, because of the information that the council had received, the council did move forward on allocating funding for well 18 for the city of Livingston using its own funding. So really, we're talking about well 19 and foregoing that with this application. With that being said, I really want to thank the members of the council, particularly Mayor Moran for coordinating discussions with Assemblymember Soria's office. Given the information now that's been delivered by the state, it does appear that they are short of funding. And so I believe if the council decides to accept the 27 million, the work will continue on with Esmeralda Soria's office and seeing what she could do to lobby on behalf of the city of Livingston to make sure that the city does receive the funding for well 19. So even if the council decides to accept the 27 million dollars, the efforts will continue to move forward with Mayor Moran to make sure that the city is in a position to lobby our representatives and ensure that we have every opportunity to receive that funding. So that's really what we're talking about here. Given the statements from the state, it does appear that there are a number of other cities that are requesting this funding as well. So, you know, on one hand, we can continue those lobbying efforts and wait, but then that, the risk that the council has is that the state will turn around and give that 27 million to another agency. So that's really what we're talking about here. Either way, the city will continue lobbying for those efforts to make sure that the city of Livingston does have funding for well 19. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, thank you, Anthony. So counsel, any questions, comments? Personally, I think this is, you know... We already have 27 million that we could potentially get for the city and I think it would be a good idea to just move forward, work with this amount, you know, and then continue working for the other 15 million dollars. And and then again, not knowing, even right now, not knowing that once we say okay, hopefully other cities, I'm sure other cities are in the same situation that we're in. So I would make a recommendation to to go ahead and move forward with accepting the 27 million dollars so that the office can continue with the paperwork that needs to be done and hopefully, you know, we'll find other ways to find more money to complete this project. Counsel? Mr. Wallace?
I'd second that motion. I'm afraid if we don't take the 27 million now, it could get reduced again. I'd rather have it committed and we have it. I don't think it's a gamble to wait. It's just tricky, I'd rather have that money in hand. So I would second your motion for item number one to be approved.
Okay, well, I'll make it a motion, but I want to go out for a public comment first. Is there any public comment in regards to this item 912? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber, anyone in the chamber? Public comment in regards to this item? Seeing none, bringing it back on 912. So I will go ahead and make a motion at this time. And Mr. Wallace, if you can go ahead and make that second, that motion for a second now? So we have a motion by Mayor Moran, a second by Councilmember Wallace. Roll call, please.
I just want to confirm that your motion is for item one.
Yes.
Roll call, Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 3-0.
Mayor and counsel, just so you know, what you should expect is a funding agreement to be brought forward in the future and that will formally accept the 27 million from the state. So just be on the lookout for that in the near term.
Can you bring that back tomorrow? Alright, okay. Next, we have item number 43, discussion and direction regarding potential water system consolidation between the city of Livingston and Floyd A Shelby Elementary School. Anthony?
Yeah, that's me again, counsel. And this is a, another discussion and direction item regarding a potential water system consolidation between the city of Livingston and Floyd A Shelby Elementary School. I do want to point out that we do have a couple of representatives, one from Self Help Enterprises and one from Merced County Office of Education. I did summarize this staff report in a PowerPoint as well. Little bit of background about Floyd A Shelby Elementary School. They're located outside of the city limits with about a student population of 130. Relies on private wells for drinking water, landscape irrigation. They are out of compliance for 123 TCP maximum contaminant level. They're seeking ways to mitigate water requirements through a water system consolidation with the city. Self Help Enterprises has indicated the state water board would participate in construction of a new well. The state water board would complete the water infrastructure for connecting the school to the city as well, the convenience, infrastructure. More background on the city. Currently, it's been challenging to meet the water demands during the summer months. We are in need of new wells to keep the water system fully functional. All of the existing city wells produce raw water that exceed the 123 TCP MCL. Currently implementing citywide 123 TCP projects. Recently authorized the construction of a new well, well 18, to help offset the increased water demands. To accommodate unexpected water demands from the Shelby Elementary School, the city would need to construct a new water well, which would most likely include treatment facilities such as arsenic and 123 TCP. City staff has identified the cost for drilling new wells that would need treatment and that's approximately 13 million. The benefits and disadvantages of a consolidation agreement. The benefits are a new water source, which we all know is going to be increased water supply for the city. Added system reliability, state funding contribution. Disadvantage would be increased ONM cost and out-of-boundary service connection. Possible actions that the council may take this evening. One, would the council like to direct staff to enter into discussions with Shelby School and Self Help Enterprises to obtain additional details on what a consolidation agreement would entail? There would be costs associated with these discussions to review documents and staff time to attend meetings. Two, would the council like to direct staff to contact the Shelby School once the city of Livingston water supply issues have been addressed? And number three, other council direction. That concludes the PowerPoint.
So couple of questions and then also just for clarification. I think some of the language is already there in the presentation and in the report, but I just like to make sure that that is clarified. So I did, that cost would be roughly about 13 million dollars and it would be covered by the state, correct?
Well, those are all
Estimates.
Would have to be, estimates is 13 million, we know, is if there's arsenic that needs to be treated, TCP. But as far as what's covered, I mean, those details would have to be discussed in more detail with the state and
Okay.
Self Help and...
Because then there's also that cost, not just the well part of it and then the filtration system, depending on what kind of chemicals need to be cleaned up there, but also the connecting part of it. There's a cost that has to be incurred to connect from the city to the school. That cost, do we know, or still part of those conversations that you're talking about?
Yeah, that would have to be discussed and we could look a little further into it, if that's what council would like to give direction on. But Self Help is here and they may have some of that information if you would like a Self Help to come forward and answer any questions that council may have.
Because then my other question, but then again, I think you already answered, but was, you know, depending on how much water is produced there and if the school uses, I don't know, 20%, you know, does the city have to pay the other? So if the cost, let's just use 10 million dollars and school is going to use only 20%, then does the city have to consider that because the city is going to use the other 80%, does the city have to pay 80% of the cost?
Yeah, those are great questions, but a little preliminary to really answer that right now. We would have to have further discussions.
Is there, okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Juan Carlos, with Self Help Enterprises. My team is the one providing the technical assistance to the state water board funding under the SAFRA program. And so some of these questions you guys asked, any project cost that city of Livingston would incur for the planning of this particular project is reimbursable. So any cost you guys incurred doing the actual work as a planning project would be reimbursable with the construction application. Any cost that you guys would incur, like as in a well or construction cost to provide water to the Shelby School will also be covered by the grant funding. Now, the question you asked regarding, you know, if we have a well that produces a certain capacity and the school needs a certain percentage of that, not all of it, then the grant funding would cover the costs that would be provided to the school. The other cost would be up to the city of Livingston. However, it would be something like a low interest loan or a zero interest loan from the state to cover the cost of that particular excess capacity the city of Livingston would be using. So it would definitely cover the cost of the construction of the well that covers all the school's needs. Everything else would be covered by grant funding by the state, if you guys wanted to go that route.
And so with that said, that grant process coming from the city, it still has to be, is it going to go through the regular or through a process where it has to be identified if it qualifies? Or do we know that because of the situation that it's in, it's just pretty much, yes, it's approved, just send us the paperwork and...
Right, right now, we're in the middle of the planning projects with Shelby at this point. And so when we get to the construction part of this, and let's say we do consolidate with city of Livingston, the funding is, would be guaranteed, it would be grant funding for that particular project. Like I said, anything over that, that'd be discussions that we have specifically with the state about capacity over what is needed through Shelby, that would be discussed with the state. But yeah, it is a fully grant-funded project because you are consolidating with a system that's disadvantaged in a school.
So I guess one of the advantages would be that the city would have access to additional water?
Yeah, definitely. And another, you know, incentive that the state provides for consolidating is you guys can also use your own grant funding to cover a project of your own that doesn't have anything to do with the city, the Shelby consolidation as well. So if there's something else you guys are interested in, maybe storage or something of that nature, the state can provide grant funding. Or if you guys don't meet the requirements for grant funding, it'll be like a zero interest loan for any kind of project you guys have to do with the state on that end as well.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Wallace.
Mr. Mayor, Anthony, going back to the other committee, fire suppression for the Shelby School. Now, that's something that's coming up anyway because of their water supply. Now, if we hook up with them through the school, their current well, we would want to make sure that name change their landscaping. Now, is that enough if they keep that old well that's there now? Would that handle their fire suppression? Although it's a mitigated thing, because unless there's a fire, it's never going to go off anyway. But I'm just curious, has that been thought of at the same time?
Yeah, those are pretty tough questions to answer at this moment right now. Those are all issues that'll need to be addressed at the time of, if council would like us to communicate with them.
Councilmember and Mayor and counsel, I think Anthony did a really good job of laying out the policy implications here. And really, we didn't feel like it was appropriate to allocate expenditures of engineering, a public works staff time for something that the council may not see as a priority. So we know that our priorities have been, you know, well 8A, well 18, some of these other high priority items. Obviously, when everything is a priority, nothing becomes a priority. So we wanted to make sure that the council weighed in from the council policy level perspective on whether they wanted us to prioritize this item. So Anthony is exactly right. These are all great questions. Councilmember Wallace brought up, the mayor brought up. I know we talked yesterday, I think it was yesterday, about some of these items. There are a lot more great questions too. We didn't want to allocate so much staff time that this became a priority without consulting with council first. So a lot of these questions, we don't have the answers to yet because we didn't want to get ahead of the council without council formally providing the direction to staff. So I think Anthony did a good job of laying out the policy implications here.
So, I mean, I think it's a great project. But, and then, but I'm also kind of thinking about all of the other projects that we have, you know, that are water-related. So which one, this will be another project or would be another project to the other water projects? You know, which one is going to be priority number one or number two or number three or number 10? So just, just, just something to think about. You wanted to add something else?
If I could just address that one item you were saying about the time that you... If I could just address that one item you were saying about the time that you need for engineering for this particular project. Like I was saying earlier, this is a safer grant-funded project right now, under the TA SAFER program, and right now, all engineering work is covered by that funding source. So we're not asking for much engineering from the city at this point. Participation would be more of reviewing the documents, making sure that if we're meeting city standards on engineering reports, plant specifications for the project, secret documentation, things like that. But we won't be asking you guys to take a lead on any of that at this point. You guys would be more in the review process. Now, if it comes down to construction, it'll be a different conversation, but in this particular project we're doing now, there wouldn't be a whole lot of engineering work being asked from the city.
Thank you for providing that. Did I already went up for a public comment? Okay, so perfect opportunity to go out for a public comment. 9:26, is there any public comment on the phone in regards to this item? Go ahead, you have three minutes. Can you please say your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Elvira Reyes. I am representing the Division of Drinking Water, the SAFER Southern Engagement Unit. The Division of Drinking Water supports the consolidation with the City of Livingston as a long-term solution for the school. We would appreciate your approval on item 43 of the agenda to enter discussion with your staff. And I just wanted to highlight that right now, we're working on that engineering report. So the goal would be to lay out all the technicalities and be able to ensure that we address all the comments that the city has, which has already a little bit been highlighted, fire suppression, what happens to the well, what is funding look like, and just be able to provide all the information for council to make a decision if this is something they're interested in the future construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments on the phone in regards to this item? Bringing it back to the chamber at 9:27, any comments? Please come forward, say your name for the record.
Diego Castillo. A question I would have, because he's saying this would be a fully grant program. On the development side, when self-help enterprise helps or brings water into disadvantaged community, it's like a home run for a developer or for a community. So would that be similar to this? I don't know, I'm thinking of a town that just got a grant for storage in a well, and it was covered, I believe, 100% by a grant. So for example, I know here in the city, we have issues with, obviously meeting our water demand during the summer, but if you can incorporate, let's say, the well that the school would need, and then maybe add some additional storage, I believe the storage could be the solution for that peak season of water where we're having issues. And then that would also open up some of the other things that we haven't been able to do, like development, which would bring in more revenue for the city and would help maybe fund some of these other projects. My question would be, because the city has just awarded a grant for 27 million, by then participating in this type of program with self-help, does that, is there a disadvantage to the city, or does that allow them not to apply for any additional funding like they are currently going after?
You know, participating or not in this particular program, or in this particular consolidation project, wouldn't, you know, affect the city's ability to apply for other grants through the state water board. But the state water board does prioritize consolidations, and then they do provide, like I said, incentive funding for those entities that take on those smaller systems.
Does that mean they get like, they get a higher score for being, for, does the city get like points or a score for participating in programs like these when they go out for grants, or no?
No, not a higher score. Sorry, no, not a higher score, but again, you know, they do take this into account when you're, it's like a score wouldn't be the quiet way to say it, but they do take into account that you guys were consolidating with a disadvantaged community or a school that needed the water source.
So would there be any disadvantage to the city for, or anything you can think of that wouldn't be to the benefit of the city for participating for something like this?
You know, most of the engineering, most of the work for this particular project is taken care of by our engineers for our work. The disadvantages, the city staff would have to review some documentation and do a little bit of work at this point, but the review is pretty minimal compared to the work that the engineers are doing for our particular project. I can't think of any disadvantages on my mind, but if you guys have something specific to ask me, I can definitely answer that. But never mind, I don't see any disadvantages at this point.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, like I said, on the development world, this is normally a home run as a development, or even taking development out of it, most cities like this type of partnership with self-help because it covers 100% of the grant, or it covers, most of the time, it's 100% of the cost, and if you don't get 100% of the cost, then you get a 0% interest loan. So it's, I mean, you can't ask for anything better. Thank you.
Really like the, it looks good, looks really good. I know Diego had some of the same questions that I had. Like the idea of helping a school, obviously. So I like the direction it's going, but Mr. Wallace, you brought up a concern that I think it's fair, Anthony, I kind of wanted to ask you and Mr. Lopez a little bit, too. Chris, if you have any comments on this? Obviously, we just approved the well project recently, just got 27 million in funding, gonna start moving on that pretty soon here. Like the idea that we're moving forward a lot faster now because it feels like we've been stagnant, but let's just say six months from now, or whatever the timeline is after discussions are had, we decide that we want to move forward with this. If all these projects are going on at once, do we have the adequate capacity to make sure that everything's being done right, get all of your other work done, and get everything done effectively in the event that all this is going on together with our other wells?
I'll respond to a portion of that. Typically, in the construction, especially projects of this scope, there is project management built into the grant funding. So usually, that's allocated so that, you know, it's not necessarily staff that's monitoring it, rather, it's, you know, a specific designated person who's responsible for construction management. One, it saves staff time, and then two, it can be covered 100% by the grant funding. So that's likely going to be the case with this particular project because it is directly connected to the state water board.
Right, okay.
I think, Mayor, if it's okay, I think those are all great questions. For me, the big question that we always have is, how much do we have on the plate? And I look at the projects that we have right now. Anthony has a report that'll be provided to the council probably in the next couple weeks or so. We've got a number of developers right now that are wanting to move forward on developments in the community now, and we're unable to because we don't have the adequate water capacity. So for me, right now, the most sense for the city of Livingston proper is to move forward on well 8A, well 18, and making sure that we've got all of the resources allocated to make sure that moves forward. So that is absolutely my top priority for the City of Livingston at this moment in time. Incorporating this project, I think it's a great idea. I think it is a legitimate concept. The question that I do have, though, is how much time gets taken away from non-allocation towards whether it's well 8A, well 18, or the priority of keeping our system operational and running? We had a conversation this morning with the engineering team, the public works team, the development team, on what we can do to get just this capacity moving in the city. So that's my question, you know, adding this project would, obviously, you can't do everything 100% of the time. So this is time that gets taken away from other projects in the city, and that's just the reality of it. And that's just me being truthful and straightforward on how things operate.
Right, yeah, thanks for that, that's what I wanted. Question then for maybe a gentleman from self-help, is if the city decides not to move on this today, in terms of sitting down and figuring out a plan, is there a deadline that we have by when we'd have to get this moving? Is there like an ideal timeframe for you all? Maybe we come back in a few months and we decide to get on the table?
Thank you, yeah. No, right now, we're at the stage of the preliminary engineering report. We're trying to make a decision, we're at a fork in the road, how do we move forward on this particular project for Shelby? And so let's say that we're unsuccessful, and City of Livingston does not decide to participate in the planning project, then we're trying to discuss a new alternative for that school. When you're talking about something like 123 TCP contaminations, as you guys probably know, treatment is expensive and unaffordable, especially if you're a small entity like a school, who doesn't have any ratepayers to cover their cost. And so it'll be difficult for us to figure out what to do next with Shelby, but we'll have to look at other alternatives. And then we're working with the state and all the other engineering that we're working with, the project engineers, to figure out what's happening next, but I don't have an answer for you, what the exact answer, what we could do then, but what might happen is we might approach you all again in the future with some more information from the state water board about what we can provide for you all to incentivize this project. Other than that, like I said, it would be a lot more investigations and evaluations of alternatives for this system, which could be ongoing for a long time.
Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did receive an email back on October 15 from Elvira Reyes, who spoke. She did provide a public comment by email. I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. Mr. Santos?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a little clarity, too, to the public. At this point, we're not approving or rejecting, it's basically get direction from council to go and gather more information to come back so the council can make a decision at some time in the future whether to do a consolidation.
If, actually, I think you answered part of my question, was what is Plan B or Plan C? I heard like, we're not sure yet, maybe, but if the city decides, say, you know, let's just start that preliminary conversation, and considering some of the other items that we have already on our plate, would you be, I mean, or would whoever's on that side be okay with working with us in regards to, I mean, this is not going to happen like, you know, quick as we wanted it to be, but we do, you know, saying like, we do want to figure something out, but kind of bear with us, and let's take it maybe, you know, not 50 miles an hour, but I don't know, 45, 30 miles an hour? I mean, is that? What will you, I mean, what would you guys say to that?
So, you know, the consolidation with City of Livingston is the most feasible alternative to address the contamination issues for Shelby School. And so right now, what we are asking is just for participation in this engineering report, to review the document and provide comments to us at this point. And once we finalize that engineering report with the comments of City of Livingston, we'll be able to provide that information to you guys. You guys have an engineering document that has a project estimate, it'll give you specifics about what the project is asking for, as well as any kind of impacts to the school or to the city. So you guys will, at this point, not commit to consolidation, but participate in the planning process, and then at that point, you guys can actually have the document, see some real information, numbers, data, and you guys can make a decision at that point. So it is kind of a slow process. I think you guys will, at the very beginning, if you guys choose to move forward with us, just kind of provide us information and data that we can include into a complete report, and then you guys can have that and make a decision on what you guys would like to do next at that point. So we're probably talking a few months from now that you guys will be, we'll be asking you guys to make a decision if you guys want to participate in actual consolidation. At this point, we're just asking for some information and data sharing between each other.
All right. Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, can we have the left, the screen with the three options back up, please? Personally, I like option number one. The benefits, I think of us getting an extra water supply in the future, the state, and everybody's going to help funding this. I think it's to the benefit of Livingston, the way our water system, we're still going to pursue for our other wells, but I think option number one would be the one to at least enter into the discussions and see what the cost associate review those documents, and the council in the next year can make a final decision. But we need, if we're going to think about it, we need to start that process. Thank you.
Is that a motion? I think that there is something we can do here, you know, and I think there are some benefits to everybody involved. Obviously, if we can get a full grant and we don't have to pay for it, that'd be better, right? It doesn't hurt to ask, right? But, you know, I'm hoping that it doesn't add too much to our plate or to our staff, a lot more than what they already have, but I would ask, I think I do want to support this, I will second this, but at the same time, hopefully, just take it one step at a time, and hopefully, we can bring it back when it's appropriate and we can look at it again, but I will second that motion. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Wallace, a second by myself. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Sorry, I meant to ask this question. Down here below on the staff report, I realize there's a motion on the floor, but pursuing this project would allow the City of Livingston to leverage any available local funds should it be necessary. What in particular was that reference towards, Anthony? Page two of three.
It's just stating that we could use our reserve capital for our enterprises on funds if we are liable for funds, but if it's grant.
Okay. I'm, it's a hard toss-up, but seeing in the future, if it expands our water infrastructure, then it's a great concept, but as it stands right now with some of the things that were discussed here, you know, we are in a hard place with our water, but seeing that this is something for our future, it's not going to hurt us to, for members of this council or staff to enter into like a discussion. So those, when it comes to the hard conversation, that would be up to future councils to come to, but to look into the ideas and see what you can come up with, even with your alternatives. If you find a better alternative, by all means, but working with our neighbors, Shelby School has many of our students that attend there. So, yeah, yes, was that roll call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 3-0.
Thank you. So next, at 9:44, we have adjournment, and good night, everyone.